Open up our work session September 21st to 2021 and cover our ARP programs funding. Mr. Valen, kind of covered some of our areas where we had promised to spend some money already that you want to go through.
Sure. Okay, the American Rescue Plan, the county didn't receive about 3.4 million dollars earlier this year to be spent on very specific purposes. You can see the eligible pieces on top of the proposal sheet. Support public practice blocks, address negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, payroll expenses for public health and public sector employees, replace public sector revenue laws in water and sewer infrastructure as well as broadband. So those are the six categories that set up by the federal government that the counties and all the cities that received these funds, they have to use these funds for these specific purposes. The National Association of Counties, of which we are a member, gave a very, very well planned out, very well laid out overview of the ARP program based on the interim final rules. The final rules have not been issued yet, so these are based on the interim final rules. So the NACO overview is a very good overview, and from the actual federal implement, federal law and the NACO's overview, I prepared some proposed projects. These are proposed. Some of them are proposed, some of them were already approved and we spent money on thus far. Let me go through them real quickly. Insulation of glass partitions in courtrooms and the courthouse as a COVID prevention and mitigation tactic. In the budget process, the board approved $4,500. Nothing's been spent, but it's been allocated for that purpose. The second one, increase the number of holding cells in the jail as a COVID prevention and mitigation tactic. Again, that was approved on May 25th by the board in the meeting. The third one, renovations capital investments, HVAC in particular, to the old library as a community public health clinic for commercial med to add healthcare capacity, and that was approved August 17th by the board through a budget amendment. The next one is negotiable. Payment for a small part of the new Waterworks administration building, i.e. a larger lobby, conference room, drive-through access, and new ventilation system as a COVID prevention and mitigation tactic. That's $100,000 of a million dollar project. The next one, replacement HVAC system for the county courthouse as a ventilation improvement in a key location as an infection prevention measure which includes design meeting and construction administration. That's $2.1 million. That number came directly out of the consultant's report that the board received earlier this year about how to renovate and update the courthouse. The next one, matching grant funds for the construction of a new elevated water tank at St. Rob's 315 near aisle 185 as a water infrastructure improvement project of $250,000. That's not the cost of the elevated tank, that's the cost of a grant match that we're going to submit to the state on the October 31st deadline. Again, this is contingent upon the state grant being received of over 2.2 million. So that is a grant match, and that was approved by the board during the August 17th meeting. The next one, extension replacement of various water lines. At any place the board may want to consider, including Scott Meadow Drive, Hadley Road, Green Drive, Coral Drive, and other areas as water infrastructure improvements in accordance with the 2015 list the board approved back in 2015. On Scott Meadows, of the $294,000, about $125,000 has been spent thus far connecting Calaway Gardens water system to the airport. So of the $294,000 roughly, roughly out has already been expended. No from ARP. And the last one, matching grant funds for diverse power, quarter million, and charter spectrum, quarter million to provide broadband. Again, these are contentious on state grant funds being received. The board committed the $250,000 for diverse power at a commission meeting, and we give a letter of support for that. Charter spectrum is a proposal, it's not being committed yet, to provide broadband. Says the county cannot provide broadband on its own. It's forced to deal with other companies, private companies, to expend their system to provide citizens with broadband. So that's phase one. Phase two, if it comes, will be next fiscal year. So phase two, may or may not come, who knows? The federal government said, the 3.4 was received in March of this year, and they said the next amount will be in March of 2022 if it comes. So let me, March or April of next year. The time of performance, the costs have to be incurred beginning after March 3rd, 2021. So this program began March 3rd, 2021, and all the facts have to be incurred, obligated by December 31st, 2024, and all the money has actually been spent by December 31st, 2026. So there's the proposal. The first three have been committed to, as well as the $250,000 matching grant for the elevated tank, and the Georgia, the diverse power EMC, as well as Scott Meadows. So I guess what's up for discussion is the $100,000 for the Waterworks admin building, the replacement HVAC system of courthouse, the remaining money in the water lines, and matching money for broadband. Or for any other companies that made your question.
All the Waterworks administration building, how many square foot, square feet would that add to the lobby conference room or the stairs? And if we don't provide this money, will that extra be added and paid for by Waterworks?
Okay, the Waterworks admin building, it's less than 5,000 square feet. It's about, it's about 1.2, we've estimated 1.2 million. I think that might be a little low. So this $100,000 is just a very small part of a much larger project. If the board says no to the $100,000 for the Waterworks building, Waterworks will fund the cost of that project.
But this would add square feet?
No, it will not.
Will not add square feet?
It says a, it's another funding source to fund that 1.2 million.
So it says larger lobby, as in?
As in what they have now.
Oh, do you know what we have now?
And then do the new facility?
Yes, yes.
Not adding anything?
No.
So the $100,000 would actually free up general fund?
Yes.
No, Waterworks.
That's what I mean, Waterworks money?
Yes. So if the project was 1.2 million, instead of the whole 1.2 coming from Waterworks, 1.1 would come from Waterworks, $100,000 from ARP. It's a proposal.
Well, the extension for replacement of water lines, on the last ARP plan we got, we had, there was a million dollars earmarked for extension of water lines, and now we're down to 250,000. So where did that other money go?
For broadband went below that?
Alright, so we took a million from the extension of water lines, went to 250, and then you're saying 500. Well, that's still 250,000 out there somewhere. Well, I, you know, I teach Sunday, so I can add.
Right.
Four 250s make a million.
Well, we got 3.4 million, and there's my proposal as of September 3rd. This has gone through various generations over since June. Let me see. Okay. For example, the HVAC system at the old library was 82,000, that's only 37,916.
Right?
So I guess, and there was no broadband in at all. So the 500 plus the... And there was no matching money for the elevated water tank.
Well, that wasn't in the first phase of the last proposal we got either. I'm just talking about the first phase. I was just trying to figure out what we decided to do with all of that.
No decision was made.
No, but somewhere it got made, because we've taken some money out somewhere and changed up from a million to 294,084, and then we've got 125 that went to Scott Meadow, which we all agree that that's, you know, that had to happen. And I just wondered where the other went.
Okay, the 4,500 is consistent, the 38.6 is consistent, the 37,0916 was 82, the $100,000 is consistent.
I mean, that's...
The 2.174 is consistent, the 250 for the elevated water tank is new, and the 500,000 for the broadband is new.
Yeah, but if you subtract the million and subtract the 294, 084, and the 500,000, and you then subtract the 125, we still got 330,0916 out there, which I guess, if you go back and add in the matching funds for the water tank, that could be your other 250, because there's still some out there somewhere. Or either I'm just not adding correctly, and you know, and I may not be adding correctly, so just, I'll throw that out there. Because I agree, the four, the number one and number two, they match up. Number three, we subtracted some money. Number four, it stayed the same. Number five, it stayed the same. Then we added in the 250 for the elevated water tank, and now here's the problem with that. If we don't get that grant, then we gotta go back and add $2 million back.
That was my question, is if we don't get that grant, what are the plans to pay for that water tank?
G for loss?
Which will be paid back by?
Waterworks?
Customers.
Waterworks customers.
Waterworks customers.
Or not do the project?
I don't think you have a choice not doing the project, I think you're contractually...
Or maybe delay the project.
...committed to do the project.
And complete the delay.
I don't think that's a choice.
So if we put more money now towards, where we got $100,000 in there as a payment towards that admin building, if we were not to get the matching grant for that elevated water tower, get within, how more of that money back towards that admin building? Therefore, the Waterworks isn't going to have more money that we could use for that water tower in the future?
Yes.
So, does that make... Man, I don't think that...
Sorry.
I was going to change.
Yeah, I just don't want that to be a burden on people. There are a lot of people who don't pay, don't have can... And this is something that we are, I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, the attorney can correct me, that we are contractually obligated to do that water tank out there at the grid. But we have a choice in that, don't we?
I'd have to look back at the agreement, but I think you're referring to the agreement with more than Mulberry Grove project. I'd have to look, I don't have that in front of me that I can certainly...
I believe what was communicated to us was that they can only build as fast as we provide water. So we might be contractually obligated to provide it, but we determine the timeline.
So not certain about that. Who told us that?
No, I remember somebody saying they're going to build as fast as we provide water, but I don't really matter that because I think that's pretty much county law.
That's not, that's not insane.
Yeah. And I have no problem with us, you know, when we agreed to put the elevated water tank to try to get this grant, and I'm hoping we get that grant.
Yeah, me too.
You know, because we get that grant, and that frees up some of this other money and do other things. I was just looking down at our previous, where we had talked about this before, and then I was just trying to match up. And that's all I was trying to do, is figure out exactly where all of these money around. And on the matching grant funds for diverse power, we've actually only obligated ourselves to 250,000 of that 500,000. So...
So now diverse power and charter have both approached us. Any other private vendors approached us?
AT&amp;T.
And what about Webber Hall Tunnel? They had the conversation somewhere along the way, well, maybe I just want to hear it at some.
They were at the summit.
Yeah.
So you have three designs that have approached us.
Yes. The only one that we have agreed to similar support and support.
Correct.
Of the others, are they going after the exact same grant?
Yes, the state grant?
Yes. Well, then if we start supporting everybody, that's almost like we're competing against ourselves.
Their understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the state would not duplicate in an area. They won't award a grant to one that they think can do the most broadband expansion for the money that they're giving them. So if we obligated 250 to charter and 250 to direct diverse power, it could be that only one of them will get it. But we don't know that, I mean, I don't, that's just...
Well, I thought, I was told that only one will get it, so if they give it to one, they're not going to give it to the other. Well, so if you're supporting two or three, then you're actually competing against yourself. And we've already agreed to support diverse power, to do the money with diverse power. We know what diverse power wants to do with it, I think they're a good partner, and we've already agreed to that. And I'm not saying charter may not be a good partner, I don't know, I wasn't in on those talks. I've only been in on the, with the diverse power talks. So, you know, when we had that meeting, so to me, if we've already agreed to do them, I hate to do something that the state might look back and say, oh, you know, they're supporting this person, this person, this person, and then we just don't get anything.
I think every county still, with every vendor, they can get from what I read.
And one thing to consider would be territory, right? So I don't think diverse power would necessarily cover the same territory necessarily. There could be, there could be overlap, there may not be. Because diverse, I assume, goes after diverse electricity customers first.
Yeah, that can happen.
Which is, which is, I would say...
Three-fourths of the county.
Yeah. So, but there are some of those customers that probably have charter, I would imagine. You know what I'm saying? So you still, in essence, are really kind of competing against yourself a little bit. I mean, that's just the way I look at it, because it's in there, you know, because a lot of people have AT&amp;T also. Like, I got AT&amp;T at my house to have diverse power electric. You know, I hate to do something where we mess up and we don't get anything. Right now, we know the state knows that we're willing to partner with diverse power. You know, and that's what I'm saying, I'm not opposed to doing any of this, I'm just saying, you know, we've already decided we won't partner with them. I'd hate to do something that might make them mad and going, wait a minute, y'all partnered with us now, you know, now turn around and do it with somebody else.
I have to agree.
Let me ask you this right now, on this partner deal. It's like, I, personally, I understand the need for internet development. Also have the issue given a private company money, I mean, this is not the private company, if they're successful, should they also do it on their own? Do we know, like, basically right now, we're providing this money for them to get where they can be, because they can't do it on themselves, by themselves. But in the future, if the technology changes, what's their plan to keep on the technology? Or are we going to have to bail them out again essentially? I mean, has there been any, talking to Bobby, talked about how copper, basically now it's going after them, it's no good, that old data technology fibers can never deal. So in the future, if things change, are we going to be the same boat, bailing these companies out and giving them money to support them again, making it successful? And also, do we have any plans, like, it's also been discussed in several areas, like these counties have run conduit, and their providers are essentially renting this space in county's own conduit, so the county gets some kind of return off of their money? Or, I mean, is that a possibility for us to do, or are we just handing the company a chunk of money and saying, please provide us with internet and please keep it up to date? Do we have any answers to that?
No. Again, these calls are extremely high level, extremely exportable. We did not get into that level of detail whatsoever. It's, the question is, hey, what can you do for us? Well, we can do this and this and that, okay?
Who, who are the participants?
Myself, Commissioner Andrews, Commissioner Irons.
And who's from the other side?
They're lobbyists. I consider them lobbyists.
Well, diverse power's the COO.
Right, for him.
Yeah.
Because I reached out to diverse power.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And said, what are y'all doing for us? And then from that conversation, got a call from the COO inviting us to come. But the charter, I don't know what her, she was at the summit, and as I was walking out the door, she stopped me and I just took her to radio. And then I went on the AT&amp;T call, but I think it was even more high level than these other...
It lasted 15 minutes, because the, it's funny that all these consultants, they were in their car driving while they were having a meeting. That's how essentially they took this meeting.
Well, they're, this money, from everything you read about broadband expansion, is flowing to private companies through government agencies as they partner. Their application, from what I understand, is made stronger by having the local government support and say, yes, we are in this with you to expand broadband, and we're willing even to put up some of our money if you get this other money. And so that partnership makes their application stronger, that what you were saying.
Yes.
But the government, the government meaning the federal and state, expect this money for broadband expansion to flow to private companies?
Yes, that's the expectation. And they, the grant, they can more, to make it more successful. They want to see a partnership of the governmental entity, they want to see skin in the game from the government that has been benefited by this. So partnership...
Well, that's what, and so then that's what we did at the previous meeting when we decided to do that with diverse power.
That's exactly.
We said, we're going to give them a letter of support, we said we're going to do $250,000, so they know we're going to put skin in the game, so that the federal government, state government, all the government knows that we're going to support this company, because we know that we've had the COO, CEO, you know, one of their top people has come and spoke with us, you know, so that's what we did. And I'm with Andrew, I understand where he's coming from about subsidizing the private business, but I also know that if we're going to partner with diverse power, which we've already done, then I don't know why we couldn't look at maybe trying to run some conduit of our own, maybe down the Manowar River Recreation Trail, and then see if the diverse power wouldn't tap into that, rent some of that, or maybe check out there on the interstate where the old phone lines used to be.
Diverse power already has fiber optic running down the Manowar Trail.
Right.
It's already there.
It comes to here.
So, that's already there.
Do we deal with Harris County government after we took possession of the trail?
No, that agreement was done back in 2007, 2008, when the Manowar Trail was acquired. So that was, the board approved them doing that. When we, when we did phase one, I was not even aware of that agreement until we started paving and diverse person, hey, wait a minute, we have, we have access to this, so now they've been included in all the other subsequent pieces. And so, as you walk down the trail, there's a junction box every few hundred feet, and that's diverse power cable connecting Pine Mountain to Hamilton.
So that's the first mile of the model, and so now it's got to get from that...
To homes.
Out to homes.
Right.
And this money would, they're going to use this money to do that.
In theory, probably good.
Hopefully we get the grant.
Right.
I mean, that's, would be, that would, send me the plan.
Inside their footprint.
Yeah. But see, well then, if that's the case, is there not another way we can run, like I said, out there on 185, there used to be those phones? People who owned, I'm sure that conduit is probably still in the ground, phones are gone, but there were phone lines on both sides of 185. I mean, that's somewhere we might could talk to the state or whatever and see who owns that, and we can put our own fiber optics in there with this money, and then there you got something down 185 that these companies could tap into. I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas, but that's what we're, we're trying to do, is try to figure out how best to get all of this to ARP.
I'll, I'll just say this, since I've had experience with public broadband operation and SGVIA, the problem with owning your own conduit and fiber is it gets stale. You know, it's only got a lifeline, let's say, 20 years, unless you have the resources to keep it up to date, then the technology evolves. And so, back to the chairman's point about owning conduit and getting a benefit from it, I'm not aware of anybody using that structure with this type of money or in partnerships with the private sector. To the extent that the, the public sector is owning the conduit, they're simply doing it just as a second layer on the gratuities concern. And they own it and depreciate it quickly and then essentially turn it over to the private sector, so the private sector can operate it and then update it as it seems, when it determines it needs to.
Now, we heard at the summit that the city of Atlanta is leasing the conduit under Belt Line.
Okay.
That the conduit was already there, and the city got possession of the Belt Line. And so now they are leasing that, and making the number, I can't remember what it was, because it was a chunk. Now, right now, there is a, a business government now, like I know what I'm talking about, I know, I'm just trying to tell you what I remember. And they get the profits for so many years, and at the end of that, I think it's 10 years, then the profits go to the city. But I don't know the details, but that is, but the person who is the CEO of the Columbus Chamber of Commerce was the Belt Line commissioner, and he was the speaker talking about that at the summit. Is that where you got that?
That's good. I'm going to pass it on maybe not, I would like that.
Was the shelf life of that fiber discussed, and I mean...
You know, I was speaking...
It's a chunk of money.
It's a chunk of money.
Like, if we could do something like that, if I could return off some of this money we're giving away, and there's benefits accounting, I love conduits.
Which is, which is why I brought up that old conduit that they're on 185.
And I mean, I already asked Aunt Randy, was there conduit there after we had the summit? You know, is there something under the Manowar? That we now own since we owned the railroad bed, but...
Diverse power owns the fiber.
Up till, up to Hammond, rebound to Hammond.
Or along the, along the trail.
All the way down the trail.
So they've done it all the way down the trail?
Well, they have, they have, they have legal access onto the whole trail. They've only done parts, from Pine Mountain to the country store. But when we get to Hamilton, they're going to do that portion also.
Right. So if we could, and like, you know, I guess, since you and I are on the same wavelength about that out there on interstate, if that's something that where we could take some of this money and do it, and then go to diverse power and say, hey, we're going to put this conduit in, can you branch off of that? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know how some of y'all feel about consultants, but you use a consultant when you don't have the expertise sitting at the table. We don't have the expertise sitting at the table. Bobby knows more about it than any of us, and we might need to get somebody to assist us in determining all of these things. And feasibility, somebody that knows.
Well, and I've talked to Randy about that possibility in the past, I do have past contacts that we used at the state when we were doing broadband projects through one Georgia, as well as the SGVIA project, so I...
Back in the...
A consultant, yeah, so...
To assist.
Well, I feel comfortable, you know, with what we've done with diverse power already and the matching money, I feel comfortable with them, because we have actually spoken with them probably, I would say, more than two or three times. So I feel comfortable with that. I don't know, you know, I'm not speaking anything bad about anybody else, but if we're going to partner with diverse and we know that they probably got over three-fourths of the county, then we probably ought to stick with them and hope they get the grant, and then they may come back and say, okay, we've gotten the grant, we've done this, we have the cable, we have the fiber optics where it is, because I have no idea what it is, and say, look, we can branch off. And then we can take some of that other money and branch off with it, give them some more money to go in and branch out. If that makes sense, I probably didn't say it correctly. Because I just know, if they're willing to put power in the county for three-fourths of it... and they're wanting to get into the, uh, this broadband business and we're partnering with them, I would assume that they wouldn't just stop. I would assume that they'd wanna continue on to their customers.
You know, um, Waverly Hall said that their commitment is to put fiber to the home of everybody in their service area and some outside their service area. Because he, he told me, he said, "Don't you live on such and such road?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "We, that's a part of our plan, we're coming down that road, door to door fiber." Um, I don't know, and we need to ask Diverse Power if their plan is door to door or if it's, you know, second file and there's still more to do, I don't know. And, and again, that might be criteria and they don't want to divulge that in the middle of applying for a grant, let their competition know if they're doing it. We don't know exactly. But I think we can trust Diverse Power. We've trusted them a long time, we do a lot of thing, good things.
Right.
That when they say they're going to expand broadband, that is going to be in good faith to do the best that they can do. And I don't know, Rob, about, um, how the state's gonna look at those applications you have to say people supporting the water wars. And I was, Charter said they were gonna just answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how they're gonna look at it either, I didn't.
They said they were gonna call Atlanta and ask that question. We, we're asking.
I just know that I wouldn't want to, to do anything because we don't know that might mess up Diverse getting this grant because we have already agreed to, to support them publicly, that we did it at a, a meeting.
Yes.
You know, I, I don't wanna.
You answered that, yeah.
Yeah, I'd hate to mess anything up. And I would hate for Diverse to say, "Well, wait a minute, you don't trust us to do," and then back out on us either. Uh, you know, and, and, and I'm not saying they would, but we gotta kinda look at all scenarios. Now Randy, the, the phase two money, which if we get it, we hope we get it, uh, that, you think might be sometime next March, correct?
March, April, September.
So we really don't have to make a decision on that three point four money right now. We really need to make a decision on three point four, phase one that we had.
Correct.
And so we know that of that three point four, we've earmarked the four thousand five hundred.
Yes.
We've earmarked the thirty-eight thousand six hundred.
Yes.
We've earmarked the, uh, thirty-seven nine sixteen.
Yes.
The, uh, hundred thousand for the, uh, Water Works, we have not earmarked.
Correct.
Okay? And, but we have earmarked the two point one seven four.
No.
Not.
No.
For the HVAC for the courthouse.
No.
We've not earmarked that. We have, uh, earmarked the two hundred and fifty as matching for the water tower, if we get that grant.
Yes.
Let me stop you off here.
Alright.
I just called Jeff on that to confirm more. I said, he said we cannot limit their development based on how fast we can hold water. In fact, he said, and I recall that, also that there is a time limit in there. That it's, they're damaged on hours.
And I think, I think we can advantage from that water tower too. Because with that water tower, they can do commercial development. Without that, they don't have the pressure. So that commercial development, that's a big tax for them.
So, what sounds good, I mean, we are.
Well, and hopefully we get the grant and we're good. And we earmarked that. Alright, of the two ninety-four oh eighty-four, we've obligated a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the airport project with the Sky Meadow and all that.
Yes.
Alright, so that's earmarked. And then of the five hundred thousand at the bottom, we've only, uh, earmarked two hundred and fifty thousand, correct? So.
But we could earmark five hundred thousand for broadband, give the two fifty to Diverse and have another two fifty sitting there for another project that we, might not be Charter.
No, but it might be Diverse.
It might, yeah.
Might be, they come back, yeah, no, I, that's right, that's what I was trying to figure out exactly how much of the three point four we have actually obligated. That was, that was where I was going with it, to let us know how much we have left. So we know we have the two hundred and fifty left at the, at the bottom one, uh, for the verse, which I agree with you, we can leave that two hundred and fifty, say, "We're gonna earmark this for broadband if another project comes up." I, I, I think that's what we could do. And then if you take the, uh, y'all make me be the math person, that's not good.
That's because you got.
I got my phone and the calculator. Uh, if you take the one twenty-five from the, uh, two ninety-four, you get one sixty-nine oh eight four, which is left to go toward, uh, some of those other work projects that we need. So really, and then you got the two point one seven four nine hundred for the HVAC system for the courthouse, which I think we're all in agreement, we, we need to do something to this courthouse with the, uh, the airflow and all and everything in here. I mean, I think that's just, uh, that. And then we have the hundred thousand that we can do for Water Works. We, we could.
What are alternate funding schools for the courthouse?
There's not a general fund budget next year. All this plus nineteen money, after this project is done, that we know working out, all this plus twenty-nine money is gone. There is no funding sources available except for general fund, the budget process.
But we still do have a billion dollars in sploshes for broadband.
I, I think a little over one million. From splosh nineteen for broadband.
One point two.
Yeah.
One point one.
Right, right.
The only one that, that I just, um, if we didn't have this money, Water Works would take care of itself.
Yes.
It is a self-sustaining enterprise of the county.
Yes.
And so I, I look at that hundred thousand, I think we could probably use that. Because it's not going to increase the size of that building at all, it's just going to supplement the.
That's right.
Money.
The only drawback to seeing that is if we dump the grant for the water tower, if we don't get that money, and the water, um, could really be kept hard.
To do that water.
Possibly.
The hundred thousand.
Not now, too, I'm assuming.
Well, if one math is correct, we've actually have two million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars left earmarked. That's if, you know, that's taking into account not the, uh, HVAC for courthouse. That's, that's adding if not earmarked.
What, what's the latest and greatest update on that HVAC account on this last day? Was that the one we reported to you last?
It's very old.
We're posting parts or.
A lot of patching, a lot of patchwork.
I would think due to the way situations are now, but that's one of those things, we could probably need to upgrade just to get a better airflow through this courthouse for, for any kind, you know, I mean, we all know what we've been going through for the last, you know, year and a half or so.
Be more efficient on that.
Yeah, I mean, be more efficient. You probably could put some, uh, uh, in the new air emissions they have, things that will control humidity and actually control, um, dirt, not in terms, but, uh, and I don't want that. You know, but they can control that kind of stuff. But I know that that's what the school system has just gone through, uh, trying to put in all the classrooms and the schools. It's trying to do that in the individual rooms. To me, and I've said this from day one, I think the courthouse is the crime jewel of this county and we ought to treat it that way. So I'm kinda, I, I, the hundred thousand for the Water Works building, I don't know about that. The two million one seventy-four nine hundred for the HVAC system, I think that's something we probably need to do. I think that would help all the citizens because all of our citizens that somehow or another end up coming through this courthouse.
How much of this has already been paid, Randy?
Paid, um, nothing of the forty-five hundred. Of the holding cells, of the thirty-eight six, only about ninety-six hundred was paid, no, seventy-five hundred. Of the health clinic, thirty-seven thousand nine sixteen, only about twenty-eight thousand two sixty-eight has been paid. And the water line, maybe a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And nothing for last petitions. So just a little bit, all these projects are just kinda getting started.
Well, is one ninety, is one sixty-nine oh eight four, would that be enough to try to do water lines for these other things you have listed down here? Or whatever else we might need?
Like, for example, Sky Meadows, you know, the, the Sky Meadow subdivision?
And those lines are very old.
Very, about, about forty, forty-five years old. Um, the opinion of, the opinion of probable cost is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. New hydrants, new meters, new lines. And that one little subdivision with today's volatile costs. If we wait a couple months, it might be down three hundred thousand. But you're gonna spend about three hundred thousand just for that little tiny subdivision. So if we have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand of over stock, we're gonna do even a small subdivision.
Well, would it be in our interest to take the hundred thousand for the Water Works administration building and move it down there to give us two hundred and sixty-nine thousand oh eight four? I mean, it's coming from Water Works.
Right.
It'll help Water Works hit the light.
But, but even with two hundred and seventy thousand, you still could do the little Sky Meadow subdivision.
Well, I understand that, but we're a lot closer.
Right.
I mean, because that's still gonna help Water Works. Because if we've already got in for the building, uh, you know, to do the building, if we took that and put it down there, I mean, that gives us a little bit more money to do, uh, into that little area. So you're looking at, if it's gonna cost us maybe three hundred thousand, we're looking at two hundred and seventy. So now you're only having to come up with about thirty thousand dollars.
That's right. Or if, if, if the price has come down, it might be one.
Right, it might, it might work.
Yeah.
I mean, I could see us leaving a hundred thousand to that, because either way, you're helping Water Works. You know, we're, we're, in, in, I guess, you know, in, in a way. I don't know.
And the one that I have the most problem with is, of course, the water tank. If we don't get the grant, then water customers have to pay for that.
Well, if we don't get the grant, then you probably have to go back to what the, uh, plan was that we had discussed at the early retreat. And the water thing, we'll have to go back into phase two, I, I would think.
Or readjust this.
Or readjust.
What, what do we know about that, Randy? Did you read it?
Um, it's due August, October thirty-first, it's highly competitive, highly polluted.
And is it?
But this might be more so, because all the evaluators are state reps, state senators and governmental, and governors and deputies. There's no bureaucrat sitting in review of this. So it's due October thirty-first, Curtis Sloop is doing our grant application. It was August thirty-first deadline, but they extended it to October thirty-first. And I believe it will then allow more cities and counties to submit more applications to be more competitive. I don't think we're gonna hear from the answer until sometime middle of next year.
Right.
Because with five, six, eight hundred grant applications to be, to be reviewed by ten, fifteen, twenty different people, that's not, that, that by definition is not gonna go fast.
Right. But see, if we don't get the, if we don't get that grant and we get this phase two money sometime next year in March, then that's there. Because the original, when we talked about this, the water tank, elevated water tank was in phase two.
It's two.
It was in phase two, uh, anyway.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, if we can, hope we get this grant, if we don't, then we may have to go back and readjust phase two, if we have to. Although, because in the original, where we talked phase two, we had, uh, one point four million put in for broadband and then the two million for the tank. And we took the tank out hoping we'd get this grant.
Right.
Which left us the three point four. So, and that's if we get phase two, which we hope we did, yes.
A lot of time to march in, Randy.
A lot of time.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And how many elections?
And, and another session of General Assembly.
Right, so.
It's better money, this is, this.
But if we do the water tank.
That would be, I would be liberal to that. I just don't want, since we are obligated to do that, that water tank, I don't think, thought back those water customers, they have to pay that bill. Because we have a lot of people who do or not water customers. So they rely on, on those water customers.
Those eighty-five hundred.
And it's providing it for, basically, we got. There, there'd be one, you, you agree to up there for that? Oh, the, I got the development wheel, but I'm talking about others.
Yeah, that's, that's the size of it.
Well, what if we left, what if we took the hundred thousand, moved it down and make it two sixty-nine oh eight four for the water? Uh, and, you know, because we're still having Water Works out.
Where do you say two sixty? That's the.
That's adding the hundred thousand to the one sixty-nine oh eight four, because we, I took out a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Alright, so yeah, I took that out, we already spent. So if we move that down there, that'd give two sixty-nine oh eight four, uh, for, with those two combined. You'd still have the two hundred and fifty thousand. Instead of giving it to Charter, we have the two hundred and fifty thousand that we, we could earmark for more broadband in case something else comes up. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Or you can come back and revisit the list if something else comes up and say, "Well, we have this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars." You know, so, uh, I, I don't know if I wanna do the two fifty if, for Charter, just because I feel like we've done that with the first. And I, I feel very comfortable with them. And then I really think we need to, you know, hopefully the HVAC system for the courthouse wouldn't be two million one hundred and seventy-four and nine hundred, but, I mean, we got a report about the courthouse, it was about eight million dollars to try to fix the same. And if we can take ARP money and take two million and one hundred and seventy-four of it and fix part of that, that's eight, that's money we don't have to put into that report. I mean, the, you know, we don't have to come up with that money. Because that eight million, we don't come out of general fund or, or out of the next floss or wherever, you know.
I agree with that.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just throwing out. I know we're discussing, that's all I'm doing.
And as long as we own the water tank, as long as we revisit that, we're making sure to lock it.
I think if we, uh, you know, and next year if we revisit that, by then we might know if we got the grant for the water tower and then we're sitting, we're sitting right where we want to be.
Right, that's right.
You know? Because, you know, I, I think that we're all in agreement that a lot, some of that money from phase two has gotta go help us further along with broadband.
Well, the broadband concerns me because I don't know what we can do. But, um, I mean, I know we can partner with these private entities. I was reading, and you, you all may have read it also, in ACCG's Journal, and it was hyped up about what, and I recall the county, what a particular county in the, to get broadband. And so I thought, "Oh, good, that's a county, that's a county we know, let me just read that," you know, just for great interest. What that article, the whole essence of the article, was exactly what we have done. Included it in their comprehensive plan, got broadband ready, um, status. They had done exactly what we've done. And it was all hyped up that they were moving forward with broadband. Well, we've done that too, but we don't have a single additional broadband customer because of anything we've done. I just don't, still don't have a clear understanding of what we can do with the money other than partner with the private, um, entities to expand it. And I wish I had a better understanding. I mean, I, I'm all about broadband expansion, but, okay, we've got this money here, I still don't have a clear understanding of what we can do with it.
Well, I think one of our first phases was, you know, partner and put skin in the game with Diverse Power. And then that's why I say if.
But it's still up to them to do it.
It's still up to them to do it, but if they come back and they've done, they get the grant and they do this, and they come back to us, then that may be where we look at that phase two and say, "Okay, well, they're coming to us now. Well, now we have this money, we, we can help our peo, you know, help our citizens a little bit more." Of course, that, you know, this is all on hopes that we get phase two, hopes that we get this. You know, we have the three point four million. We know that these other items are things that we, you probably need to be done. You know, so I.
I just don't look to gain clarity about what we can do to expand broadband. And we will expend the money on everything else. And not that these other things aren't important. I just wish that personally I had more clarity. And that as a group we have more clarity about exactly how, and you know, you're reading the guidance, and it's just as foggy as it can be, so we're all.
So from day one, there's always been that concern about the two million clause, right? So are we no longer, there's a way around that?
Yeah, so we, we've discussed that through this, that evolution of this. Uh, a lot of people brought that concern in discussions about the federal money. Right, it's been on a lot of the listener discussions with ACCG as well as, and roundtables by ACCG. And the consensus nowadays is that the gratuity clause, uh, doesn't apply to funds received from the federal government. And so because of that, um, in that position, that pretty much everybody's taken, I feel much more comfortable with that, um, at this point.
Which is why I agreed to do a letter of support to diverse power and give them two million two hundred thousand dollars. And I knew that you had felt more comfortable with it, so I said, okay, if our, if Russell, our attorney, is feeling more comfortable with that, then I'd feel comfortable to partner with diverse power because we've had so many talks with them. And I'm like, okay, I, I, we've talked with them, I feel comfortable with them. Our attorney feels comfortable, so that's why it's the last meeting or previous meeting, and I said, well, I, I agree, I think I even made the motion to do it.
I think that's right, and I think that was based on multiple things. Uh, one, that they were gonna be a preferred vendor with the state, right? Randy.
They did.
They've received that. And then, well, we also looked at diverse, and we knew, like you said, it's got three fourths of the county. A majority of the county that's underserved that I think the board has been interested in trying to, um, expand with broadband. And so I think the board decided it made the most sense at the time that it was the most efficient and effective way to reach the largest amount of potential customers or potential access to broadband at the time.
It could be that they would take whatever money they get and do as much as they can, and then come back to us and say, okay, we can do from, to the homes if we have this much.
Well, that's why.
Let's just say it runs down one sixteen. But it doesn't connect to individual houses, because that's something that I.
Well, see, and that, and that goes back to if, if we, uh, let's say they get that grant and they're able to do what they, they can, and then they come back and we have the phase two money, let's say we get the water tower grant, and we got three point four million. And if Russell feels comfortable, well, then that opens up a better avenue to partner with diverse with that money. But at that time, that's probably when we need to ask, sit down with diverse and make sure, okay, where are you gonna run then? Are you gonna get internet to, you know, and be, to the home, be more specific of where you're going?
Out there at the road and.
Right. That's where, that's where, you know, then, because if we put that much into skin in the game, and we need a little more, where, hey, where are we going with that? You know, and have a little bit more, uh, you know, we don't wanna just run it out to the middle of the woods. And I think the verse would be more willing at that time to probably sit down and say, okay, we have this, this is our plan going forward. We, we know we're preferred, uh, the state, we've partnered with you, we've already done this. And I think that that'd be a more, uh, easier avenue to, to do, i- if, if that all, of course, now it all goes back to hopes of all these grants and everything. But, you know, we, you know, we gotta start somewhere, and then starting, that's where we start with diverse power, offering them that money and support.
Did the verse mention fiber or satellite? Because I know they have all their electric meters on satellite now. So. Initially, they said that, so they were very different.
No, I thought they said fiber.
Okay, so as a recap, so far, the only change to this document is taking a hundred thousand dollars from the Water Works admin building and putting it down into extensive replacement of water lines on these various places. That's the only, and then take the word charter spectrum out.
Right.
So far, the only change is thus far.
Right, but, but, yeah, but you could leave the, you know, two hundred and fifty with those going to verse, and then they give us another two hundred and fifty if we need.
For broadband.
For broadband, and if the verse comes back and says.
We want some more of that.
We need something else.
Or if somebody else came.
Well, I think it'd be the verse, because like we were talking about, they got three fourths of the county.
And then.
And their part of the county is the part that's most underserved.
And one more detail. Would the board want to then target Sky Meadow Drive in particular to replace those water lines?
What would be the most pressing?
Or Hadley Road or Green Drive or Carlisle?
What would, what do you think?
Fire is pretty short.
How about, weren't we only down for getting to Green?
I thought you were gonna do that too.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Then these are on the board approved list. These are on the, I know, on a board approved list.
It's been, Green was discussed and made.
Right.
Green's been on the board for about eight years now.
Yeah. So, okay, with this approved, what projects do I target?
Of the water, you mean?
Yeah, the Sky Meadow, the Hadley, the Green, the Carlisle.
Well, let me answer that question, it's this question then, of the Sky Meadow, which we've, we've, we've split the one twenty-five and got to the airport. Has, uh, Jeff said there have been any issues with the water and the pipes that we have in there now, even though they're fifty years old?
Why don't you ask the expert?
Well.
Well, that's what I'm saying, does he want to?
Yeah.
I did, and this is his answer.
But I mean, ask him to prioritize.
And he, he always say, that's a political reason, political answer.
It's not political.
Ah, probably, that's what he'll say, so, but basically, but, but Hadley Road, Green, Carlisle is on the board approved twenty fifteen list. So I, I guess, I'm, that's where I'm taking the list from.
Right. And Hadley is to finish the second half?
Yes.
Because the first half, I'm gonna say, because we've, the first half has already been, I don't know if it's completed, but it's already been worked on. Is that correct?
Half of it.
Yes, so you're talking about Hadley Drive and with the second half.
Right.
Now, so how many, maybe we need to look at how many people that will serve too, if we're gonna run two miles.
Right, no, I, I mean, I, I agree.
I agree.
Do a cost analysis and decision.
So for example, Carlisle Drive is number three on this list, a hundred and six thousand dollars, eight customers. This, number seven was Green Drive. Uh, a hundred and fifteen thousand, twelve customers. And then. So that's Hadley. Hadley is three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and twenty customers.
Right, is you asked Hadley again?
Hadley? Three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and about twenty customers.
All right, what was Sky Meadow?
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and about twenty-five homes. So.
Now, on Hadley, they don't have water at all, the second phase, correct?
Correct. Well, and subject.
Right, so if they didn't want to, they wouldn't have to tap into the water if we put it on their roof. Would that be correct?
I don't think anybody has to tap on it. It's not mandatory.
No, well, I mean, I know, but I, well, my point is that.
Well, I agree with you.
Yeah, and we don't run it for no reason. And we talk to those people to see if they, if they wanna tap in. We know Sky Meadow already has water lines in there, and if they're not failing right now, that may be something that we can put down, you know, uh, to another thing. We go back to Green and Carlisle, which you're looking at, well, I believe you said eight customers and twelve customers.
Correct.
I think Greens, I think pretty much everybody on Green is saying they tap in, we put water in there.
They do.
So we know that they do, that they do water. Do we know about Carlisle? And, I believe we've talked about Green for, uh, several times. And I think that everybody, we pretty much know that Green would tap in, and how much you'd say Green would cost?
About a hundred and fifteen thousand.
About a hundred and fifteen?
Hundred and fifteen. But again, these are, with volatile processes.
Right.
That'd be a little more than that.
But if we did the, if that gave us two hundred and sixty-nine oh eight four, because we add that other hundred back down into that, then you could do Green, uh, and then you probably could take a look at, how much you'd say Carlisle?
Hundred and sixty.
So you could do Green and Carlisle, that's two right there. Instead of doing one, that we don't know if somebody's gonna tap in. We can do one where we know they're gonna tap in, and then we can do another one, and we can knock, knock out two. Right now, which, uh, I believe, you know, by what we've done, getting water to the airport, taking care of the airport, and then getting water into Sky Meadow, right now, I think they're, they're, they're doing okay, and we just hope we don't have a big catastrophic failure of the fifty-year-old lines.
Right.
But that could happen at any time.
Sure.
So if they're doing okay, Hadley, we probably need to check and make sure, before we spend three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, make sure that we're gonna have customers that are gonna tap in, I would think. I mean, and I'm not, you know, and I'll say this, uh, Sky Meadow and Hadley are both up in my district. But I'm just saying that, you know, we need to look at more feasible. And I know we've talked about Green for a while, we did talk about, we've talked about Sky Meadow. I've talked about it for three and a half years now, and I think we came up with a good solution, the way we've done it to the airport, we're helping them. Uh, Carlisle, I can't for the last few things, where is that?
That's across from both states.
That, that's right, I mean, I, I.
Across from both states.
That's right, yeah, I was in there drinking, I just didn't know what color it was.
Let me take the universal project of Carlisle, Hadley, Green, and Sky Meadow. Get with the director, prioritize those again.
And then come back.
And get an opinion of probable cost with today's dollars on those four projects. And then the board can choose among those four with the available funds.
Right? But then we agree to move that hundred thousand from the Water Works down to that, so that that available fund will be two sixty-nine oh eight four?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, because that gives us, you know, roughly two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to, to go toward that.
And so these more projects can be accomplished.
Yeah. Especially Green, because I know we've been talking Green for a while.
Another one, that's appreciated.
I'm gonna go back to the, the last one, broadband. Charter said to us at some, that they had already received grant funding to add a thousand more customers to HERS, to HERS County. They already have that grant to do that. If we are not going to commit the two hundred and fifty to them, can we still all agree to give them a letter of support for their grant? With no monetary activity input from us?
Is that term spectrum for saying?
I mean, you should have done the same thing. Well, we support them expanding broadband. We've done some portfolios like that, and full on grants without monetary.
I'd feel more comfortable just doing the letter for them and making sure the government knows that we put skin in the game in the diverse. I, I don't think I personally would have a problem just doing a letter of support for Charter, because we are supporting them to expand. Because they've already, because they've already received a grant. So we're basically saying.
Well, this is for their new grant.
That's what I'm saying, we, yeah.
And so everybody knows, all the providers that accept money get, they're in a fight with the board about. Either, one, they get it to update their system, or they get it, two, they have to new system, yeah, expand that. So the money's already there. So I'm with you guys on this, because each provider is their company, they've already got federal money. You know, we've got part of the money, it's very limited. And to me, to be honest with you, it's one of those ones that it's just, we have no idea for ever anymore. This is overhead, it's funded. So I think we, we're definitely allowed to be choosing how we pursue this.
Well, well, before you came, I said, one issue I have is, we, we, we still don't really know what we can do with it. I mean, we know that we can assist providers, but we don't know what else we can do with it. At this point, I'm, we'll be glad when we have more clarity about that.
So the letter of support to another entity would be okay, provided there's no monetary support, just a good letter of support?
That we support them with five little grant to expand their services.
A good lot.
Yeah.
I wish, because I, I have a feeling, and I said, I have, I have no expertise in it. We have, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand, we said that we would match into diverse power. I do have a feeling that they're probably not coming back to us. And if we have that other two hundred and fifty that we did not give to Charter, just sitting there, and we can say, well, we have another two hundred and fifty we can give you because our attorney and everybody feels comfortable with you, because what y'all have spoken with us on several occasions. I, I have a, I don't have as much heartburn doing that, because we've already partnered with diverse, we, we told them that's what we wanna do, you know. And, and we, they serve most of the, most underserved part of our county. And, and, you know, we've talked to their head people as well to, as Randy put it, he thinks a lot of this, or whoever these other people, I don't know, I wasn't.
To some, some obvious.
Hasn't, I wasn't on the bunkup, but we've.
Well, the charter, uh, lady that we talked to was the person writing the grant, so we were talking to the grant writer that day. But that wasn't this conversation. But I don't know if they, did you think it was their.
I think it was more of a sales, right, it wasn't really anything about extramarital. But, yeah, I do feel comfortable with diverse power, because they definitely are central areas, where we definitely need them. Uh, and then everybody else outside of that, I think would be a, a, for the discussion.
And they'll be much smaller.
Right.
If I recall, the verse was probably one of the first ones. After you spoke to them, I spoke to, uh, one of their, uh, I can't think of names, you know, I spoke to them, I mean, you know, that was one of their first people to come to us and say, hey, we want to do this, what can you do to help us? And then we came up, we got this letter, support, matching list, all that. Uh, you know, so we've had talks with diverse longer than we've had with anybody else. It seems like to me, I could be wrong. I, I'm like you, Bobby, I feel very comfortable with diverse. I believe, I trust them, and they're willing to do what they have told us they would do.
I guess it's a good list, and it's part of the point, it's like, branch, get an island, or, or don't, or, or don't do that.
And they should own water tank. And if we don't get that grant, that we can revisit that something.
Right, in the second portion.
Yeah. So day two on this, if that grant doesn't go through, which is, you know, doesn't likely do as well, so there's no guarantee with it. So what is our day two discussion? I know that the chamber is trying to push from their side, and this is a slow process. And it's something, you know, without anybody being really, I mean, some of the other experts calling those advisory committees, you know, what? Have we heard anything that's the day two process with the chamber? Or have we had anything else along the lines of happening in the industry? Or do we have, or get anything else?
Where, where are you telling that about?
The chamber conference itself, right? You already have, they're the ones that actually put on the expert's board, the board's. Day two, they're going out to try to bring these other providers, how best for the county department, what that day two looks like? What that process is.
I wasn't aware of that.
Didn't know that we had a site?
I know you had a site, but nobody's ever come back, you know, with a. It was, you know, it wasn't like, they didn't give us any information the way back, it was just hearing the conversations about, this is what we're doing.
It was, oh.
It was. But you're saying, like, oh, they're, they're now into another, like, phase?
No, it's not a phase, it's just they know where they were past that.
I don't.
I know they're talking.
I don't know either.
Is that something that we?
No.
Is that something that we need to look into, like in maybe advisory boards, to kind of follow up on, or where are we at in that juncture? Because if we leave it, uh, sitting where it's at, or really, I mean, what, what are day two is, or keep pushing us forward, it's just kind of, I don't want it to fall in dishears.
We're just talking about advisory.
For broadband, trying to work with these.
You're saying creative advisory?
Yes.
With the other providers?
To bring those providers and start in these discussions. Because there is a likelihood that these grants that we, that we give them back, or, you know, that we actually put funding towards, or say we commit funding to, that they don't get through. So we've got to have a secondary plan. I don't want us to go through the grant running process, and then all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're back to square one, nothing more, that leaves no, no day two.
Well, that's why I said earlier, I, I think, I think before you got here, that if the verse doesn't. if Diverse doesn't get that grant, or whatever, you know, and we do get the money for Phase Two, which is 3.4, but we do get the grant for the water tower, well then, we still would have that 3.4 of Phase Two that we could go to Diverse. Okay, you didn't get this grant, but we've already told you, we're supporting you, what can we do? And then we talk to them and say, we have this, but we do have a million in sploths. So that'd give us a little bit more money to go with Diverse and say, okay, we're trying, we've already told you, we want to support you, we're partnering with you, we've done this. That's when we, we could go to, you may have not been here with Russell, said he doesn't have heartburn about the gratuitous call. Well, then that's when we go to Diverse and say, okay, well, here's Phase Two money, water tower's taken care of, all this other stuff, we have this money.
Right.
What can we do then?
I was just saying, the caveat is, no concern on the gratuitous clause, where we are using federal funds for a federal designated purpose.
Right. Right. Yeah, not trying to put, I wasn't trying to put work.
No, 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 you're good. I just wanted to make sure, because I know this has come up quite a bit, and it's evolving, so that's, that's the.
But I think what you're talking about is our day two is, is that we hope we get that Phase Two. And when we get that Phase Two, then we have that money to reallocate, or to allocate, or do whatever we need to. And then by that time, Diverse may have gotten the grant, may have gotten the grant, but we still know we want to partner with Diverse, because we've, that's what we've agreed to. You know, I think our day two is, is that we hope they get the grant, and then we come back to that money and see what we have to do in Phase Two. If that makes sense. I don't know if I explained it pretty good, but.
It does, it makes sense, it makes sense, because there's multiple, you know, there is, because it gets in one with the kind of plant that we talked about, just like the same way that Fulton County does, you know, as far as on their Beltline. And trying to look at different ways.
Will you explain that, because I was trying to explain the Beltline?
Yeah.
So what it is, is back in the day, Fulton County come up, and they had put in, or they were willing to put in fiber, because they know along the Beltline, that's where the youngest group is, that's where most of their workforce is, really even Beltline. So what they did was they tied in each one of their, their subsectors up underneath, that have a lot of their commercial businesses, a lot of their enterprises coming in and employing these, the, I don't even know what they're, the work, the main workforce. So what they did was they partnered with a conduit company, a fiber company, and they put in conduit all along the Beltline. And what they did is they put in multiple tubes. So you think of it, you look at the canister, there's probably four by four rows. So you've got these multiple conduits stacked on top of each other that span the whole length of the Beltline. So what they do is each tube in itself, they go out and they lease these conduits that are already around. Only then the provider does, whoever, let's say Amazon, let's say Google, let's say whoever, come in and they, what they do is they'll lease it for X number of years. Once they lease that, what they do is they lease it with the company that Fulton County went and partnershiped with. So they get 75% or 60%, yeah, I remember exactly.
The companies that put in fiber free get 75% of rent for.
Until, and then once that is paid for, then it flips. So 25% goes to the provider, 75% goes back to the county. So I think that's something that, you know, we need to at least vet until, you know.
And now Randy can tell Bobby that fiber, Diverse Power's the trail.
As the motorway trail was developed, they're putting in fiber lines, Diverse Power, in fiber lines along the trail. Objection boxes.
So what Bobby's talking about with Beltline, that might be something where if we could find out if the conduit is still out there on 185 from the phone that used to be out there, that might be something that we could see. And with that 3.4 billion, we might could put the fiber in that conduit, if that would be the gate to do what Bobby's talking about with Beltline. I mean, we, but that gives us time to check into it, study it, and see. Because we don't know if the phone lines, the conduit's still there or not, or who actually owns them.
Resident fiber.
Right. But that might be something, because if you can run that down to the interstate on both sides of the conduit, because the phones were on both sides, then you got a chance of branching off at your exits and hitting some of that. You know, and that way, Diverse Power might come back and say, hey, well, that's Bobby's talking about leasing this. You know, I don't know, but I agree with you, that's something we probably need to study and look into.
And that's something that the county can give behind, and actually all the piece of that, you know, that future build or that future of the county.
Any other questions or concerns?
What if, like, another, like, we're gonna be Calaway. Calaway's, uh, burns, prepared, or one of these state grant applications on their own, to help themselves. And they've asked for letter of support from the county, no money involved, just a letter of support. It's skin in the game, that they've partnered with the county government to do this, as y'all see, that's a problem. Just a letter of support, no monetary.
I don't see the problem with that. I mean, we've partnered them to help out with the airports, and all that, I don't know. And they partnered with us to do the switchback for the trail. And I don't think the letter of support is a, I don't think.
So what made those?
Adjustments.
Those two adjustments? And to bring back more information on those four water lines?
Yes, the 100,000, I'm sorry, I had to take that call, but, um.
Yeah, the 100,000 coming.
100,000 goes down to the.
Water line.
Water lines. Water spectrum comes off, give them a letter.
Right.
Okay. And we're also giving the letter of support to the county authorities.
No, no, they're doing something on their own.
Okay. Y'all know it.
No, I don't.
Okay.
They're doing something on their own. I think they're going for a different type of grant, or something.
We think they do it with, now, West Point five four grant, we want seats have, so it's just a, yeah, we're behind it, but, no.
No other questions, Mr. Congressman?
I do have to agree with Susan. I don't like the fact that it doesn't seem very clear on any of this, when it comes to Broadman. And I tend to like to know what we're trying to do.
Yeah, they just don't want us to spend all our money, and then by now.
But it seems like every time I do the research, I find out like you, these other counties are doing the same thing we've done, but they have done even more than we have, other than what we've done. It's like nobody really has clarity, not just us.
Well, some counties have, in North Georgia, have actually run, but they're much smaller than we are.
Right.
Or cities have done it, a lot of them, but we have different channels.
I really think the first thing, for us to do as a plan, we need to sit down and figure out what our target areas are. Regardless of what the.
Are we in the top of this, or is that the first?
I mean, we should know what constituents have and what they don't. I mean, we should figure out who needs it. I mean, to be honest with you, we need to do, I mean, we won't be providing the community, say, hey, I think you can put it here. We need to have that background. We make the first, and tell them the fact, if we want it in this location, or they're gonna, or they're gonna go with this place? Or we're gonna look at a place?
They talked about it last time? They said, they said, they said they would.
And is this good back to the consultant? But I can believe there. Now, they're using better funds for that.
Yeah, it worked, right.
You see, the consultants basically put together that.
How about good money?
Here's the current need, and here's a comprehensive plan on how to move that forward.
Good evening, I'm on the color here, it's County Board of Commissioners, September 21st of 2021, meeting order. Commissioner Andrews, her latest hard occasion this evening.
Do you have my call, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for the beautiful county in which we live. We pray, Lord, that you would touch each one of us tonight as we make decisions for the county. We pray that you have wisdom to do the right thing. We pray for our citizens, for good health, Lord, for blessings on all of them. In the name of Jesus, we pray for you.
Your place, John, is for the place of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, and made of this, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda tonight, or minutes from our regular session of September 7th of 2021, is our adoption. And I'm the second in question, is there any further comments? And all those in favor? Question varies. Next, is there any parents or citizens?
Yes, sir.
The next item on our agenda this evening is under old business, and now it's time for a decision on our special use permit application. The public hearing regarding the special use permit application by Kirsten Luer for Verizon Wireless was held and closed on August 3rd of 2021. Therefore, no further comments or questions will be received from anyone other than the applicant. The application is for a wireless tower on a 100 by 100 compound on 231.9 acres of property located on map 042 parcel 070, land lot 121, land district 20, on the east side of Drankin Road, approximately 1,035 feet, south of Georgia Highway 116, Hamilton, and zoned A1 agricultural forestry. If you would like to make some comments or have any further information that you'd like to share with us.
Can I read the statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kirsten Luer, here on behalf of Verizon. I did just want to recap our application's journey. Back 7/21, the planning commission recommended approval with the conditions that A, the tower not be lighted, and B, that power must be buried. Removing that at the A required lighting requires an overall height of 199 feet. So that's a result, the result would be an 18-foot drop in the heights for which we apply. Verizon has accepted each of these conditions. And then on 8/3, the Board of Commissioners tabled our application until this evening, so that Verizon may produce an RF engineer to answer questions about their network's design, provide additional site data, and discuss additional details, triggering the site's special use request, all of which Verizon feels was proprietary information, which they do not want in the public record. Additionally, Verizon's RF engineers are not trained to handle such encounters, and therefore unable to appear in person. Finally, there were references to Verizon towers previously approved by Harris County Commission that were not built. Both Clerk Michael and Director Williams are unaware of any such scenarios, as is Verizon. We do feel we have proven our need for this site and accepted the conditions recommended by the planning commission. We ask that you approve or deny this application on its own merit, not based on feelings towards the applicant. I think very much your consideration. I don't know if there are any questions?
Is there more other questions?
Uh, two questions. One is, if this tower is constructed, what is the timeline for turning that tower on, to make it operational?
They don't have a construction start date. I can certainly provide that.
What is typical from the time that it's built?
It does vary, it could be anywhere from a month to a year, so that's why I really don't want to speak out of turn about that.
Well, the reason I ask is because is the one on 208 a hardship over there?
I don't know, but in trying to determine which towers were referenced without really clear addresses, I checked with Clerk McMichael and also Director Williams, and they each said that they are unaware of any towers that were approved by the board, Verizon Towers that were not built.
This one is built.
Okay.
But the residents keep asking me, when will it be turned on? Well, I don't.
Okay, I could certainly find out if, again, an address for that site.
Of course.
Okay.
Kirsten, it's the other side.
Okay, yes. And the other question that I have that is just of curiosity of mine, says your engineers are not trained to handle such encounters as in answering questions about your towers?
Correct. They design and maintain the network, they provide what jurisdictional codes require for such applications, but they don't participate in the hearings, they provide the documentation.
I guess you need.
I want to clarify a statement that is foreign to being proprietary information, that information that we asked for wasn't proprietary to your customer content whatsoever. What we were asking for was different positions that this tower could be erected, to where in the service radius that we're actually trying to center this tower could be moved to a point where, yes, you can still cover your roadway that you're trying to get through now, which is your engine, but also be able to cover some of our residents here that are without service today. So the proprietary information, I really think that's misleading. That's kind of a, obviously, I think that's a deflection, because we weren't asking for any kind of proprietary information regarding your customer base. And then, two, going back to engineering, not being able, not being trained, or not being adequate enough in, I guess, our discipline, to be able to sit there and be able to answer questions directly. I know multiple MSOs that actually have engineers, architect level, that can come in and explain, you know, why they're putting it here regardless of weathers. Let's just say your average of your repeaters or whatever you're putting up there for. There's multiple caveats there that I don't necessarily believe in as an accurate statement, because I know for a fact that we've been called up for engineering, you know, hat stands, to be able to answer some of these questions. So I really feel like that's a deflection, honestly. That's my stance about it.
Are there any other questions, Mr.?
I have one, do you know, and you may not know, if there is any more towers that may be coming down, that may be going other areas, areas in Harris County? Because the last time we spoke about this, on the tower that's at Highway 18 and 185, exit 34, we were told that y'all, Verizon would be coming back to us, and they had 10, I think it's nine or 10 more potential sites. Do you know if that is still the case of where y'all are still trying to come into our county?
If you don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't we get an updated list, Bobby? Couldn't we get an updated list for you, of those possible towers? At one time, my commissioner said we had a map.
Certainly.
I think like, nine or so sites.
And I have one more question. Would you agree with the statement that just because you guys are bringing, you talk about Broadman, Broadman County, would you agree, I mean, it's not a mutually exclusive statement, that just because an LTE tower is placed, that's bringing Broadman to the county?
Just because an LTE tower is.
Is being brought in a location, let's just say, just completely hypothetical, that LTE tower is being brought to a location that doesn't service residents, it's really for a traffic, from a vehicular, traffic standpoint.
Oh, yeah, that's the main goal of this tower, is to cover the Georgia 116.
Right, I was just covering the statement, you have to bring in Broadman to the county in itself.
Okay.
But would you agree that's not mutually exclusive for a tower in a community?
Well, I mean, obviously, that's the main goal of what they're trying to cover, but it would also cover other things in the surrounding areas.
Right, if it, right, if it covered more of a residential, and I would say even at the 6040, residential to a roadway.
I mean, I don't define the sites, so I don't remember. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, it's obviously tough to say, you know, providing, you know, possible internet. In the last meeting that we had, you know, Calaway Blue, their location was covered by this tower. And after talking with them, yeah, as you mentioned, a lot of their equipment runs off internet, and so it talks, but so. And after further exploration of that business, and they're really looking to expand it right now. So I say, one, I mean, I know you have all your pros and cons.
So I see one, I mean, I know you have all your pros and cons, but one major pro for me is you're helping out the local business and helping the business grow, which is where we hope we get more tax dollars from and at least able to extend it on citizens by helping our businesses and that commercial growth and that, and I see this as helping that local commercial growth. I don't know if y'all haven't had thoughts around this on it.
Well, you know, we had asked them to bring that to us, information on that particular, just like you just talked about, but they have provided that to us.
Well, we had a work session earlier where we discussed and debated on what to do with the ARP funds with broadband or any type of internet service. We all know that's what we need in our county. We're all trying to figure out a way to do it. And we're all sitting here talking about, we don't have clarity, we don't have this, we don't, we as a board, we don't know what to do. Well, we've turned down towers before, we've approved towers before based on what we thought as a board, where it was going to help in all situations. But if we're sitting here debating, trying to figure out a way to do internet, then we either need to decide, hey, we're going to do this, or we're not going to do this, and we need to probably tell Verizon, don't come back anymore, which I don't think that would be a smart. You know, I think every decision we have is a hard decision, and I take my decision in my role as Commissioner very seriously, but at some point in time, as we've talked about, we've got to figure out how to start and where we need to start. And I don't know if the towers are the place or not, but I know this, with the ARP money and what we're trying to do is the fiber optics and all that, we have no idea. At least with the tower, we have some semblance of an idea that it will help somebody, some people, whether it's 20 people or 100 or 50 or higher, and it may help a business. We've got to kind of look at it that way. You know, we're going to help somebody and get started, or are we just going to not help anymore?
I agree with that. However, I think our decision tonight is not about, do we want broadband, will it help somebody? The decision tonight is, is this the right place for it? And I'm not an expert on that, and I was hoping that Verizon could clarify that for me, but thank you.
And two, when it comes to broadband, you know, somebody that, you know, being somewhat of a something matter expert on this, when you're talking about bringing broadband into the county, you have to look at it from the perspective of what is going to help the greater good to the most. Just because you bring it in something doesn't mean that it's going to help either one family or a hundred families. We've got to look at what technologies and what locations better support our comprehensive plan going forward with the county and our neighbors itself. And to me, it's not mutually exclusive decision to just go for bringing a LTE tower to the county. If it's not in a place to where it services the provider and also services the county, what is the point? If we're talking about broadband exclusively, kind of bring internet to the county. If it doesn't help our citizens, doesn't help the neighbors as well as helping the partner that's coming in to partner with the county by putting the LTE tower up, that is my concern. We talk about ARP money all we want to, but that is exclusively trying to be able to partner with the providers and our citizens and the neighbors that need it. LTE itself, when it's placed, just like any other business, you know, that's what they're in business for, but our, we have to look out for the best interest of our constituents and our neighbors first and foremost.
Well, we did spend about an hour and a half talking about our ARP money and kind of spending. The way I look at this is probably different, you know. We have a business that has come in here and they have submitted an application. They have, as far as I know, and Mr. Williams can correct me if I'm wrong, met all the requirements to submit an application to the business in the county. It is not our, and this is my opinion, it is not our job to sit here and dissect what they plan to do. It is not our job to ask them to provide any information that personally, if I were in their shoes, I wouldn't provide it either. It's called business. So I guess I look at it a little differently, which is not unusual. I look at things a little differently most times. But we have a business that has come to us, asked to do business in the county, made a legal application, and it's our job to determine whether or not they can do it. It's not our job to sit here and decide, well, we'll let them come to the county. If I wanted to sell hot dogs and you only wanted, you wanted to sit here and dissect how many hot dogs I could sell or how many people would eat my hot dogs, that's not our job. And that's just my opinion.
That's not lose focus either, when we're talking about bringing broadband to the county or the LTE placements. The LTE placement that they're, that we're considering here off of Grantham Road itself already has service. Is the service at 100% optimization? Probably not. We're not talking about a place that has zero service. So we don't need to lose focus on that as well.
Russell, on the tower that we turned down several months ago, a year ago, or give or take six months ago, that one, we had a legal reason or basis where we knew that we could, we had a legal standing that this tower did not fit in our comprehensive plan, it did not fit where we needed it to go, it did not fit on the scenic highway in the corridor where we had it right there. Correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything like that on this road or in, conjunction is not the word, but in with this tower? Is there any legal reason that you see that there might be something that the county for our comprehensive plan would say that this tower does not fit within it?
Not that I'm aware of. That consideration was done at the planning level and the planning commission, of course, approved or recommended to approve it based on the conditions that they provided, but they saw no issues or concerns with anything dealing with comprehensive plan or scenic highways, et cetera, like we did last time. In other words, it kind of checked the boxes of those broad categories, but of course, the board has discretion in those broad categories.
And I think I heard you say that Verizon agrees with Donalds.
Yes, ma'am.
The conditions. Yes.
Any other comments? If you, as Verizon, agree with all these conditions, in a year or two, are you going to come back and raise the tower and put a light on it, or would that just be it?
They can't.
They, I want to make that clear. We agreed to conditions and this is what happens, and that's it.
They would have to come back to the question.
That's, that's correct. They would have to come back with a brand-new special use permit application that the board at that time would decide. But to the extent that the board, if it's so inclined and approves a special use application, it's subject to the scope without approval.
Thank you.
Any other comments? There are no questions? There are no questions? Look, I'm going to make the motion that we approve this tower, probably not the last popular decision, but as I weigh the pros and cons, I see it helping our community, I see it helping the local business, I see the county benefiting from a local business. I think at the end of the day, it helps our community. So my motion is to approve it with the conditions that you said. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? Question carries. Is there anything else on other businesses to say?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up, I know that the last meeting where I was not at, we talked about situation going on in my fire district where I live, and I'm kind of concerned about that because that's my fire department, and I'm very supportive of my fire department. And I know that our chief was also unable to be here. So I would just like to know, and I found this out today because I did not know this, and I appreciate Byron telling me, I have always been under the assumption for the last 23 years that the Flat Shells District was defunct. And one of the first things I did as a commissioner is I helped give the building back to the barbers because according to our contract nearly with them, if we didn't use it as a fire station, it reverted back to them. So the building is now back to the barbers. Well, if the Flat Shells Fire District gets defunct, and I know that my fire department, Northwest Harris, has been covering that area, what do we as a commission have to do to say that that's no longer a fire district? And then where do we go about trying to redistrict? And I know we're supposed to discuss this at the next retreat, but you know, I'm kind of concerned that I don't want any of those people out there to not be without fire service. And I can say this, I know what goes on in Northwest Harris, and they never not do that with people because they're my, they're my folks, and I know they'll take care of their people. And right now, they're taking care of those people, which technically, now that I find out, is not our people. Well, how do we fix that? Is that something that goes through the council of fire chiefs? Is that something that goes through the commission? You know, I think somewhere we need to find out who's in charge of trying to fix this. Before we get to this work session, we need to kind of have our ducks in a row of what we need to do. And I'll be the first one to say, every time Chief Hawkins or Chief Pecloff asks me, hey, I need a donation, I'm there to do it, or whatever they need, but I don't know all about the fire districts and all that stuff, so maybe I need to educate myself a little more, and I'd be more than happy for that to happen. But I really did not know that Flat Shells was still a district because it hadn't been around in 23, 25 years.
I'm going to search some files to see if there's a notification to the ISO. I know right across from Melody Lakes, I haven't looked for the Flat Shells. Somebody was notified, though. Don't know who.
Well, it may have been just that Northwest Harris got notified and said, hey, we're closing up shop. I mean, I don't, I don't know either. And I've got several friends and a couple relatives that are volunteers at Northwest Harris, and I just always have been under the assumption that we took care of it because Flat Shells went to funk. But if that's not the case, then we either need to sit down with the council fire chief with West Point and Northwest Harris and Antioch, those are the three closest, and say, hey, what can we do to make sure that these people have service? And I understand the county not in the business for fire service, I understand that they're all volunteer, but I also understand they're our citizens, and we need to make sure, just like we do with water and trying to do broadband, that our citizens have service and are protected. And I don't know how to go about doing that, and, and you know, and I don't know if, and I don't want to get into a humongous debate, and I don't know if Chief Hawkins and Chief Pecloff have any other information, but I just think this is something that we don't need to just lay over. It may be something that we need to have Randy, you go back to council fire chief and say, hey, this is an issue, I need y'all to bring this up at your next meeting. I don't know, I don't know where we go from there, but I do know somebody needs to get in charge to make sure that we can do what we need to do to make sure Flat Shells is no longer a district and that the districts are being redistrict and being taken care of. And I don't, like I said, I don't know if any, you know, anybody else in the comments, but, and I apologize not being there at the last meeting to support my fire department, but you know, I'm here now, so that's what I'm trying to do.
When I followed up after the meeting to find out, I think the speaker said the last time, referring to us, we needed to redraw the fire district. So I asked Randy, is that our responsibility to redraw the fire district? It's the fire departments. Randy, talk about that. Whose responsibility is it and what your conversation's been? Because I too wanted to follow up with that and see if that was our responsibility, then we needed to get on and get that done, but I understand it's not our responsibility.
That's how I see it. You know, the county does not provide protection. We rely on private companies and we pay them a supplement, and they do a really good job. But again, a lot of counties and cities don't have, you know, paid departments, a lot of volunteers. Again, this is a program that's been, this has been a discussion for decades, which they haven't solved. But again, the council fire chiefs are a volunteer organization. You know, we will dispatch however they deem necessary for us to dispatch. If they want to redraw the lines, and if they all 10 can agree on those lines, we will dispatch however they want us to do it, like they do now. We can redraw the lines any how we want to, but then the 10 districts have to agree. They don't agree how much, as we saw in the Catalina and Antioch thing, and they had to get together and they solved their problem. So I will look at the council fire chiefs to solve this problem. If they want to redraw their districts, they can, and we will dispatch accordingly.
No, they can't, Randy. What can? They can't, the council chiefs can't redraw the district. But that, that's not, that's not the way it's set up.
Okay, then who, who will redraw these districts?
The county originally described all the fire districts at one time years ago. And, and now you've got one in question, it's been in question for 20 years, that on ISO, it's still an active fire department legally, unlike what happened over at Melody Lakes where they went dark and they said they're done, and it was turned over then to Waverly Hall, but it was an active district. Now, when you're going to dissect the one that we're talking about, then you have to bring in ISO and the county have, we can't describe a fire district for ourselves. Where, you sat right there and said, we're contractors, we're fulfilling a need for the county. And, and we can only, and we only get credit, we, meaning Northwest Harris, only gets credit for the district that we are assigned to. The minute we go over the line into Flat Shells, nothing counts. We, our ISO rating, nothing, we receive absolutely no recognition for it. So you, you can't sit there and say that the council fire chiefs can just lay this out. Now, like they did in Antioch, all they were looking at is where the lines were on the districts, okay? That's a pretty simple thing to work out, recommend to the county, and then go to ISO with. But we're talking about a, a, a district that I don't think all the commissioners realize how big it is and what it goes to, and, and what West Point refuses to do within that district. And then you're talking about shortly, you're going to get a pad ready on the west side of 103 from, across from the industrial park. You just put it out of West Point's fire district.
Well, let me ask you this. See, if the county is in charge of this, the only way the fire, council fire chiefs might be able to look at the lines is the county first has to get rid of the Flat Shells District and the ISO, is that?
ISO.
So what my point is, is that where we have to start first?
That has to be, that has to go dark, and then it has to be decided. If, if, the thing is, if the county says we can re-describe based on input from the council of chiefs and all, I mean, I'm not saying ignore them, I'm just saying that's a part to include. Once they're re-described, then either part of it could go to Northwest, part of it could go to West Point if West Point was in agreement, or you create another fire district.
Right. So the first way we have to start, though, we have to get rid of the Flat Shells District and the ISO. So if Nancy can find a letter where that's happened, then at our next retreat, then that could be the thing we could go toward. But our first course is that the commissioners have to make sure that that district is no longer. All right, so we can't do anything until we can do that.
Not really.
Okay, so then if by our next retreat, or by retreat, if we can make sure we know, and can make sure that Flat Shells is no longer a district and it has gone dark, then that gives us a better information to start discussing at the retreat and maybe have the council fire chief sit down, like you said, then we can figure out how to make this more compatible and work it out and bring everybody together. But before we get there, we've got to get rid of this Flat Shells District first. Okay?
And, and keep in mind that West Point is a member of the council fire chiefs.
Yes, sir.
And, and they don't participate, very little, but they are members, so they would be included in this discussion, so at the same time. But I'm sorry, I... But I, I'm sorry, I, the comment that the county isn't in the, in the fire suppression and have fire departments, Randy, I just can't, I, I just can't swallow that because I think the county has a fiduciary responsibility to fire service, no different than it does with EMS or the sheriff. People come into this county and are, are looking for fire service. They call us more, more times, you know, than they do sometimes the fire department or the sheriff's department or EMS. So I think it's something that you need to address. That's all.
Well, then I think that's what we need to do as a course of action now, is what we've, see what we need to do to make sure the Flat Shores District is no longer a district, not a part of I S O, nothing. And then in our retreat, that gives us somewhere to start because now we know this district is gone and we've got to redo the lines, whether Antioch takes part, West Point takes part, Northwest Harris, who, whatever. But we got to get rid of that first. So that, I think that gives us a starting point that we may not have had earlier. Because I did not know, uh, Chief Hawkins, until you told me tonight. I have always assumed for the last 25 years that that district was gone and that it had always been part of Northwest Harris because I've been with some of my relatives when we've had to go out there. So I know how far it is because I've had to go help myself. But, uh, thank you. That, that gives me a knowledge, a, a starting point. I appreciate you telling me that.
And I just want to make a comment. The, uh, keep hearing that the county is not in the fire service business and while that may be legally so, uh, I want to say that there is a group, a heck of a group, that does provide fire service. And I want to tell you that I thank you for what you do and what your family sacrificed along with you. And I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say, you don't know how difficult it is to face some of the residents down there when, when we're running late to an emergency and all. And this is not an easy thing for Kurt, Kelly and myself and our department to bring up that we don't want to go down there and help people. That's not the point. Somewhere along the line, somebody's got to step into this and, and take responsibility and we can't do it. So, uh, in, in some cases, we're here with our hat in our hand. We're just trying to be as helpful as we can.
I appreciate it.
But as a condition, I don't see a city here drawing fire lines. It's going to have to come as a recommendation from the council.
Well, I said, I think the first thing we have to do is we have to declare Flat Shores defunct and then we move, then we can move forward from there. But if that's on the commission, then that's where we need to start. We need to do that and then that gives us a starting point to go back to and say, okay, council fire chiefs, we've done this, now let's sit down and see where we need to go.
And bring us a recommendation.
Right, I agree. And we'll go. Right, but we can't do that until we get rid of the, the Flat Shores Fire District that's been defunct for 25 years. And Nancy may have a letter she's looking for. So we, it, it may be easier than we think.
And then too, if we do, in collaboration with the, the chief of chiefs, right, they're going to come in and go to do this, to, you know, look at the redistricting. After, you know, that's said and done, with us coming up with a redistricting of our own, with the county itself, is that something we can do in tandem? If it's deemed that we're, should we redraw it? I'm talking about separately, separately from once we do that in the district. What I'm saying is, she's not as a young one. If the districts change from the county and then of course, then have the, uh, the fire districts change so forth and that, right? That'd be the second step outside of, of course, the, uh, is that something?
Oh, no, they were definitely, they were kind of, I think we're getting a cart and four horse. But first thing we need to do is let's, let's do the Flat Shores and then that gives us a jumping point to, to, to go forward. And I think that the, uh, the, the chiefs will be more than happy to sit down, uh, and, and try to discuss that once we get there, but we got to get there first. But I, 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 I see where you're going. I think we're going a step ahead too far.
Yeah, I'm like you. I mean, regardless of that's your district, I want to get your ear in, because one hair is counted.
Right.
Any other comments? None? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is under new business, Mr. Financial Statements for June and July of 2021. The financial statements for June and July of 2021 were provided for us to review on September 7th of 2021. I want to thank Clint this evening. If y'all have any questions, maybe Mr. Allen can help us. Anybody have any questions? All right, is there a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to a partner.
On a second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in the paper? Josh and Carrie's. The next item on our agenda tonight is appointment for the Board of Health. A vacancy exists on the Board of Health and appointment of an individual is needed to complete the term of Dr. Martha Clements, whose term expires December 31st of 2023. This appointment can be made by any commissioner. The Board of Health has recommended that Dr. Radhaan Duraski be appointed to fill the position to complete the terms of Dr. Clements. Dr. Duraski practices medicine at Wellstar Family Medicine, formerly Clements Clinic in Pine Mountain. By state law, O C G A 31 dash 3 dash 2, this position to be appointed by the governing authority of the county shall be a physician actively practicing the medicine in the county. There is no motion.
I'll make the motion that, uh, we accept the, the Board of Health's recommendation and with sadness is that Dr. Martha, who has been my doctor of mine entire life, her and her husband, Dr. Matt, uh, we know passed away just recently. And so it is sad that we have to do this, but I do make the motion that we accept the Board of Health's appointment of Dr. Duraski.
I'll see.
Any further discussion?
Does the member have to be a resident? Of the county that practice in that family?
All those in the paper? Josh and Carrie's. The next item on our agenda this evening is for our county manager and our project updates. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Sheriff, we're going to ensure his, uh, the updated program. Number four, land use development code. The application was filed with the community development on September 13th. First reading will be before the planning commission, October 20th, and the second reading and consideration adoption on November 2nd at the Board of Commissioners. If all goes well, the U D C can be moved to effect November 16th. And the U D C has been put on our website about a week ago. They, and currently it's the clean version as well as the retina version. So you can see what has been changed and, and the clean version as, as it might appear if the board approves it. So that's been posted on the website for public review. Uh, and to get the Board and Planning Commission ready for these public appearances. Number eight, replace the roof of the prison. That is on bid. The pre-bid meeting was September 10th. It opened on September 30th. The fourth consideration on August, October the 19th, October the 19th.
Can I ask you a question about the prison? And this has nothing to do with the roof, but it's just something that, uh, was, I've found out. I, I heard that all prisons are being inspected by the state due to making sure that, I guess, we're COVID compliant. I don't know if that's a correct term. Is that, do we know anything about that? Prisons or county correctional institutions? I'm not sure. I just was asked and said, hey, do you know that all the prisons in the state of Georgia are being inspected?
Prisons, I don't think it was county.
So, so generally correctional institutions, as Randy pointed out, the difference is they're owned and operated by the counties and they're simply at an interim agreement between the state and the county that y'all execute every July of the week. And, um, so to the extent that they require that, it would have to fall under the authority provided by that contract.
All right, I'll just carry it.
You know, there is, um, I think I've heard that there is a V O J investigation at State prisons in the state. And that may be the, the reason.
Well, the board does take COVID-19 service to the prison and has annulled everyone that wants one.
I was going to say, I, I was over there for a meeting today and it's, a lot of procedures in place.
Thank you.
Number 11, the annual element resursing program. The rule list was approved by the board on September 7th. Submitted the, the Georgia Department of Transportation waiting for their approval. It was approved and then we'll get their, um, their, our annual application. Number 22, Phase 4 of the Maryland Railroad Recreation Trail that is ongoing and should be completed by early December. A lot of weather delays lately. Number 23, Phase 5 of the Maryland War Trail that is being designed and surveys taking place right now, weather permitting.
Are they still on the trail? Are they still on the days that they, that you sent out that they have stopped the road? Have they had to add any more data to that?
No, so far, weather permitting. It's not, it's not looking very well. Um, right now, they are projected to go until Thursday night.
This week.
Of this week. And if weather was good last week, they wouldn't be finished by Thursday.
Right.
But right now, it might be Thursday or, you know, Friday morning at 6:00 a.m. It might be next, it might be the next week.
Okay, but they're close.
Really close, really close. Number 27, rejuvenate the county's airport's apron using G. Doc. Grant funds. That's on bid, it opened on September 23rd. With poor consideration of that project on, on October the 5th. Number 31, update the airport's five-year capital improvement program. This was discussed at airport committee meetings in August and September and it's, and the airport committee is recommending the board approve the five-year capital improvement program